To that request and sent it to the agency. We did an acknowledgement letter, so that one is pending. That's for 145,000 dollar request. It's likely that one will end up going to the regional office for the supplemental funding request committee to consider. I did get another one, I think it was even last week, President Small, I think it came from Brandon for the Feral Horse. That's 261,740 dollars. Alicia sent over an acknowledgement letter for that, but I'm pretty sure that one's going to get sent up to the regional office also, excuse me, for consideration. I know I reported on before on the one for IQA and some carryover funds that we had last year. The funds have been released on that one and provided to the tribe. The director, she cleared that work with Alicia. The other two that still work in President Small, had fees and reservation security. So I'll find out, those two bigger ones especially, I'll find out from the regional office when they're going to be meeting again. They meet quarterly, but they've told me in the past that they have a whole bunch of requests in the hopper, they'll meet sooner than that, so. I already reported out, there's a hiring freeze. We're still on the continuing CR2, continuing resolution 2, which expires March 14th. I know that it's been in the news, you know, Congress working on a budget with the administration. I just haven't seen anything further as far as the possibility of a government shutdown. You know, that's just a couple of weeks away, so we'll see if they do another CR or what For us, all of our FY24 excluded facilities and social services and fire programs, our funding has been expended. Like I mentioned, the tribe can still submit requests. We're working on inventory records. Facilities to have continues to work on work orders for government buildings. We're continuing to work on renovating vacant homes at the agency. Detention facilities, the adult detention center, I know we've been going back and forth on that. But I met with President Small and OGS, and I know President Small consulted with the council and the boiler replacement for the adult detention center has been turned back to the BIA, and so Forrest, the regional facilities manager, he got that over to acquisitions last week, so they're going to be advertising that for a contractor to bid on. So that's currently, I don't keep President Small posted on that as that gets through the advertisement awarding process. The YSC met with President Small about a month ago on that. I'll provide another update by email that Forrest sent out that even went to the regional director and ended up, I think, in your meeting last week out in DC. But the main thing for us right now is we're trying to get Gary Sterling back over to the site so we can pull that well pump and get the schematics figured out or the electrical connection figured out. I'm not a technical person, but you know, for the BFD that works the water through the facility, getting that lined out with the well pump. The weather permitting, see if we can get his rig in there with warming up, you know, warming up, cooling off, you know, but we just, that's the main thing is we just got to get him over there to pull that pump, and then if we can get that fixed, we can get water back in the system. But even after we met with you, got agency visit like in our plan that they gave you, got agency facilities working on the things that they can get done at the local level, but anything else contracting that out, the regional office may be offering that to the tribe as a contract or just doing another commercial contract directly to get the work completed. Really, the main thing again, it's just been a huge challenge for us is getting that water operational in that facility so we can get it turned back over to OGS and they can get it up and running again. That and the weather one I explained about the boiler system. I talked about the termination program, I think, already. That's ongoing, like I said, they reevaluated that listing, I guess, through HR. I lost another employee last week. Hopefully that'll be the end of that for now. There, I haven't seen anything formally on it. I've talked to my boss about, but I wanted to mention it here. It's been in the news. I think it's by March 13th or 14th, all departments or agencies in the government have to submit reorganization plans. And I sent that memo to President Small. I mean, you can just Google it, it's out in the space already. But I'll email that over to the council to take a look at, it's real technical legal terminology in there. But I talked to my boss about it last week and what, you know, we're looking at is more cuts possibly in phases is what's in that memo. So these reorganization plans have to be submitted. I talked into my boss last, yes ma'am?
Question. So, and it's out there, internet too, but closures of the BIA offices, 25 closures. Do you know what criteria that was based on? Are they inactive? Are those self-governance tribes?
I think if-
Determined?
I'm not sure about the details on how it was determined, council member lone bear, but I, I think those are GSA offices. I seen that over the weekend. I sent an announcement out, forward that to the council also, I sent it to President Small just this morning. But it's, it came from the House Natural Resources Committee Chair, it was a press release, Jared Huff, Congressman Huff. It talks about these GSA office closures, and there's a list in there, there's a link in there, and you can go to that table of office closures. That doesn't, I don't know what the need for that decision. We're not impacted here. Our agency buildings are owned by the agency, not by GSA, so that won't impact us. I checked on the one that you asked me about, Ashland, that's Ashland, Wisconsin.
Ashland, Wisconsin.
Looked at it on there, it said BIA Ashland, but it's Ashland, Wisconsin, so there's no BIA office in Ashland.
That's gonna be my next question, I saw. I was like, BIA Ashland.
But isn't there a function with Great Plains that falls under our region?
I can check, I'll check still, like you asked.
I think that's up there.
I'll check. I know the EVSO covers Great Plains and Rocky Mountain region, but I'll check if there's a function. But I don't know any details, council member lone bear, on how that decision was made, known through the administration at GSA, but you can see on that listing, it's affected BIA offices, not here.
So do you get, I know we get, I mean, it changes, like I said, sometimes, a minute. But do they give you prior, I mean, is there any way to prep for what comes down?
Well, with the way things have gone, a lot of times, we're not getting a lot of information until the decision's been made. So that's been very frustrating for my staff, my managers at the agency, managers at the agency, because they have staff concerns. And I just try to reiterate to them, the managers, that once we get, I get that information from my boss, I relay it to you as quickly as I can.
So I want to say something. So on these cuts, so on that memo, I haven't gone through the full memo, but the way I understand it, it's looking at a 10% cut in near future. And I guess, with President Small and kind of reading a little bit of it, my understanding is that 10% cuts will probably be your vacancies that you got advertised now, that they put a hold on, probably could stand that 10% cut, then it moved to 20%? And does that start to affect your staff at 20%?
Yeah, thank you. So when I talked to the regional director last week, President Small, they're looking at, like you're saying, 10%, 20% and 40% cuts. So the 10% cut, and I haven't gotten anything formally, I mean, I haven't gotten any guidance from the memo, I just looked it up myself, but the 10% cuts, my boss feels like can be absorbed by the regional office with their vacant funded positions. Now, if there's 20% cuts, what's being relayed to me is, is that that'll have to be absorbed by not only the regional office, but agencies also to absorb that 20% cut for, by vacant funded positions. If there's a 40% cut, it's likely that, you know, permanent staff now might get cut. And, you know, there's, and I think you could really have, I mean, to that extent, I mean, we're bearable in staff as it is, I talk to you guys all the time about, you know, advertisements, you know, trying to get people to apply, not getting positions filled, we're in a hiring freeze now. But, you know, obviously, if any cut is going to impact the agency, whether the positions are vacant or not, because even if they are vacant, you know, we use that funding still. We provide that funding to the tribe, you know, even through like supplemental funding requests, or we know that there's programs at the tribe that don't have a lot of funding for the year, we try to assist them. But at a 40% cut, I think that would be pretty major, where it's going to have more of a severe impact on our trust responsibility and trust services where we barely keep up as it is. You know, you might end up with offices where there might not be people in offices. So that's what I wanted to talk to you about, about the reorganization, what I know for Wanted to, just another reminder about orientation, I think I emailed the president, vice president of council, my boss that originally told me, the 19th and 26th of last month, our Thursdays are good days for her, you remember when I reported out for him, sorry, you remember when I reported out last month about orientation? Council wanted the RD to come down for orientation. But if there's some dates that President Small, you can look at again, I can relay that to my boss and see if we can coordinate him to come down for a visit, and I'll get the programs over here for orientation. I already mentioned the GSA office closure. One other thing I wanted to mention, that council member Small reached out to be outlined by that data, I know I said to a click report, you know, it doesn't give you a lot of detail. I reached out to Lorna Babbie. Lorna Babbie is the director for the land consolidation program. She was actually, if you remember, she was the acting regional director late last year. She's gone back to her permanent job, like I said, as the director of the land consolidation program, so I reached out to her, council member Small, I want to send her an email, and she said she could do a summary. I remember when the land buyback program was going on, they were providing pretty good reports to tribes, had a lot of details, so I'll get that information from her and I'll get it relayed over to you.
Thank you.
I think that's all I had for now, unless there's any more questions or comments from the council.
I'd like to ask the council superintendent, have you guys looked at the council playbook Any of you tend to just focus on concerning the tribes, all tribes? Because what he's talking about is happening. What's in that playbook about our tribes, all the tribes, not just some guy, is happening right now, just, I'm listening to him talk. And what's going to happen is they're gonna, they're gonna take our reservation, that's their ultimate plan. In that view, read 2025, and I was wondering if any of you guys, if you were, barely talked about it right now, what's going on, and it's happening. That's the ultimate plan, they're going to take this reservation, and what are we going to do? Our leaders, right now, we need to be, that word, our people can vote, or know where they're going to go, they're going to get deported. That executive order that Trump signed states that we are no longer, I'm feeling it in Cherokee Wyoming right now. I went to the playground the other day, and a woman's kid came by and kicked snow in my face. Did she say anything? No. Because, and you know what that little boy said? He said, "You're not a US citizen." "I'm an American, I'm from here." It's happening. So it's that 40% that he's talking about is just going to get higher and higher than the BIA responsibility. Minerals, that's what they, what did Trump say? Throw baby drugs, what do we have under us? Yeah. And we have coal, and we have that, that precious mineral that allows us to talk on these. So if you really want to get serious about protecting our rights here, and don't forget that we're all proud of this piece of land that we have, and you look at our tribal IDs 207, that was how the government identified prison camp 207. All the reservations have that. It's getting real, and something's going to happen, and they have the House and the Senate, and the administration. Our people are going to go, what are we going to do? What are you guys going to do for us? We're talking about petty scenes, about a year, it won't even matter. If these guys keep going the way they're going, we need to get that back, and I can save us. We need to join those lawyers to save us. Because they're after that, they're after our minerals, we're the ones that have the most right now. As the council, a long time ago, if you, because Fidelity is drilling right over there, you know what the CBM bed is? It's a huge lake under us. And when they drill, they can drill as much as they want and take as much as they want. They want a monitoring on the east end of our reservation, there's none up there, we're going to be getting money from that. But no, there's nothing. BIA came over here, talked to the people, not one single councilman was in there. And we listened to them talk, what they were going to do, they had to do that, they had to do that. So that they can inform our community, the people who are going to be affected by it, who we are. So we need to start getting real here, our leaders, people voted you in.
And, you know, these guys, Washington all week, last week lobbying and together with people over there to try to figure out how to address that exact thing. I posted something on the group chat for the council and administration, and it was the video of the Oval Office meeting between the president of Ukraine, Vladimir Zelensky, and Donald Trump, and vice president, what's his name, I can't remember his name. The vice-
Vance.
Yeah, Vance, JD Vance. And that was one of the most embarrassing things I've ever seen in my life, the way that the president, a freedom fighter like President Zelensky, was treated by the Trump administration in that meeting. It was, it was an embarrassment every American in existence. And one of the things that, if you watch that station in its entirety, and boy, it really, it's really hard to watch, because, you know, it's embarrassing. One of the things that he specifically stated was, is if there was not a deal for those precious, those precious metals, those precious, the resources that Ukraine has, if there was not a deal for us to get those, that in exchange for our support of the Ukrainian military, that the deal was off. If we don't, if we don't, if you don't, you know, you, you're powerful because of us, you wouldn't have this power if it wasn't for the United States. And if there's no deal done with us, that we're out. That was his exact words. So I'm concerned as well with what you're saying right now, because we have those same resources that he wants from Ukraine. We have that, we have the CBM, you know what that means when she says that, that's coal bed methane. And it's just like the water tables. If you, if you drill, it's not just, they're not just taking where they're drilling, that's everything that's around it is going to fall into that. And that's why they say they want monitors, so that they can monitor our, around our reservation, what's being taken from under us while they're, while they're drilling right down the road. Because it's just like any other liquid or any other, any other thing like that, it's all going to fall into a basin where they pull it out, and it's going to continue to fall into that basin. And we're going to lose what we have underneath us, and we won't even know it. This is, this is, this is something that's been talked about for decades. We have natural resources here, and I told the tribal council, I expressed to them that I feel like it's, they're not going to force us off our land, what they're trying to do is they're trying to force our hand, trying to force our hand, they're trying to make us so desperate that we say, "All right, what do you got for us? What do you got? We're desperate, we need money to become self-sustaining, so we're willing to sell you our resources, what's your offer?" And that, and I believe that that's, I believe that's their ultimate goal. I honestly feel like that we, that they can't take our land from us. I don't think they can. But what they can do is make us so desperate that we sell them our resources, and I think that's their, I think that's what they're trying to do. So, so I guess, they, these guys, you know, the tribal council, the president, very thankful for them for going over to DC last week and, and going and fighting for us, you know, they did exactly what you're asking of us, so that we're, we're on the ball, we are aware of the concerns of the people, the concerns of the patient, the concerns of the legislative branch, the concerns of BIA as far as, as far as cuts go to their, to their, their departments. This is all, this is a big deal. And just to reassure you, Jennifer, just to give you peace of mind, it is a big deal in our office, and we are really, really trying to figure out ways to combat the extremists that are in Washington right now. So hopefully that can give you kind of clarification, give you a few answers, give you, give you a little bit of peace of mind, we're, we are just as concerned as you are, and tribal council and the administrative offices are also, share those sentiments as well, and we're trying to find solutions, so.
Thank you.
I just want to answer Jennifer's, I want to hear questions there, you know, we're a political component to this deal here, we're not, you know, I don't know whether they're going to deport us, but anyway, there is that Indian citizenship, citizenship, citizenship act 24, that granted citizenship states, and the executive, or the, I guess the executive branch, which would be Trump, he can't overturn that himself, that's enacted by Congress, that was enacted by Congress, so that has to be, he just can't say, "We're Doug Eric, because we're being deported," he can't do that because of that act. And it takes Congress to overturn that act, not Trump, he can't just say, you know, you guys-
In an executive order, yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, as far as the, what's coming down the pipe, you know, it's my concern as president, you know, I think we, there might become a point in time that could be assumed, we can actually take care of our own, take care of ourselves, and how do we do that? That's the question. That's the question, how do we do it? We've been in poverty for a long time, you guys, we continue to live in poverty because of what we want, we fight for that right, our land and everything else, but I guess, where do we go from here? You know, that's my question, where do we turn from here to help the people? I mean, we're already in poverty, let's be real, we're already there, better than all that. But where do we turn, you know, how do we make that turn? How do we make that change into people to survivors? That's my first tip. I mean, it's just not something that I can do, council can do, I think it takes all of us in that effort to, to answer that question, whether we can or not. I'm hoping we can, I'm very hopeful that we can, you know, but, yeah, I guess that's just what I want to reiterate, that, you know, they can deport us, you know, we're here. Joe?
All right.
We'll move on after this.
Yeah.
I'll let you talk, I'll learn a while after this.
Andy, are we done? Are you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
I'm not ill, I scratched my throat in the half here while swallowing and coughing at the same time, so contagious. One of the things that I, when I was doing research on our tribe, was that we had cornered a market at one time with cattle. We had begun to actually move our cattle into slaughterhouses, and the federal government was starting to buy it, but the outside ranchers, we had put them, we were literally shutting them down with our progress and our, and our process, and they were the ones that shut us down. Can we move back to cattle ranch? Because we have all this land, we have all this access to leases, can we as a ranch, as a ranch community, as a ranch reservation, begin to really do that in a major way? Because the federal government is looking to process meat, and all the outside communities are looking for meat. Also, we have a hemp market that no one is taking advantage of. There are people out there that would love to have a wholesale supply of hemp, and we have a lot of land, and also, I know this is an issue, but marijuana, there's one thing that the Crow tribe doesn't have to worry about, even though they're in juxtaposition, they're in chaos over there, their marijuana program is keeping them alive, and we have access to all these people that come through Montana, and we can do, you know, drug programs, we can do all those things along those lines, but we really need to figure out how, what to save ourselves, we need to start a meat processing program for smoking, so if people need food and does that deteriorate? You know, those are the things that I have been researching, you know, I just want to try to know that, you know, there are people out there that have ideas, and we just get all of that, so we can help save each other. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, see, I want to mention, we have a corporate charter, remember? We have that.
Yeah, which, more things are moving on that, and you see, but I guess answering John's question on the cattle deal, you know, there was a steer enterprise back in the day that the tribe owned, they owned all these steers, they had about six, seven thousand of these steers that they ran. When the tribe did that, is there was nothing, when the tribe, when the reservation was riskfully established, there was nothing, the white people weren't in cattle here. And so then that's when the tribe incorporated the steer enterprise, so they took that back and ran around the cattle, that's probably what John's talking about, you know, they started buying, the army started buying cattle from the tribe, and then as time went on, you had, had road members starting to get cattle, so that's kind of how that was all taken up, and that was dissolved, you know. And Donovan had brought that up, you know, as one of the, one of the thoughts of maybe, you know, but I think right now, the biggest problem is the uncertainty of this market, you know, this market took a whole time higher, you know, it's a tribe by, you know, by $3,500 cattle, next fall it was $1,500, you know. But that's something that's been talked about, something we're discussing, you know, and the hemp, we haven't discussed much of that, we're just now started doing our EDC meetings again, we're going to start doing them, I think, biweekly is what it sounds like, but we're going to start moving forward in terms of economic development, because we need to, we need to now, I mean, we're actually, but anyway, thanks you guys, I think we need to get moving, and thanks Andy, work for your time-
Yeah.
-for your update, and I think we're getting moving on the agenda here.
Item number four, Diane McLean, TRICO update. Real quick, before Diane starts, item number seven is, I'll just go ahead and make a motion right now to table item number seven. Motion by Melissa Fisher, table item number seven, enrollment on the agenda, second by Tori Davy, Melissa, Howard Antiveros-
Yes.
Stefan Rainey Bird-
Yes.
Johnny Free-
Yes.
Ernest Littlema-
Yes.
Tori Davy-
Yes.
Yes.
Teresa Small-
Yes.
Glenn Spotty-
Yeah, sorry, I can't hear good.
Melissa Fisher-
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Diane.
Okay. Good morning, council members and president, vice president. I'm representing the TRICO organization in Ashland, Ton River Electric. I'm representing, um, the Trico organization in Ashland, Ton River Electric. And we had sent a letter, president, chairman is Jim Collins, who used to be a referee at the basketball games, but he retired, he got married. And, um, he wrote a letter January twenty, and I'm assuming all of you received it. Okay, but, um, the letter, the reason why we wrote the letter, we had written a letter to the old council to get on the agenda every quarter, to give the council an update on what Trico is doing and what they're planning on doing. And also the information from the tribe goes back to, uh, Trico on houses, new home sites and which has, we haven't had any, but, um, the new projects is what I report on to them. Um, I'm glad that you guys put us on the agenda. What I would like to do is be on, um, the agenda for, um, June, September and December. And if something comes up, if, if they're gonna, um, postpone it, someone can contact me so that I can change my schedule. We usually have our Trico meetings on, on Thursdays or Fridays, because some of the board members, that's only days that they're available.
So, so basically you're asking to be able to be, to be pre-scheduled for the updates?
Yep, just like, um, the BIA, but quarterly only.
Okay.
And, um, usually what they had told me was that, uh, we have our minutes, like we just had a meeting on February twenty-sixth. The meeting that, uh, the minutes that were presented at that meeting are from January, just like your minutes are. And, um, their agenda, when we have a meeting, we start at ten o'clock and we have prayer and pledge agenda. And then we have a monthly report from our finance person on our financial reports, income statement, balance sheet and cash flow. Then he reports on our breakdown on income statement and the monthly projected budget that Trico has. And then we have a consumer data, it breaks down how many houses, um, have used electricity, what the kilowatts are, uh, how many churches, how many municipal, municipal, what do you call it? Municipal buildings, what their kilowatts that they use, that's broken down for us to look at. And this last month, um, the, I know the light bills were high because it was cold. We did, Trico did good on, on electricity. Um, because we have to buy the electricity from Basin Electric, Basin Electric, um, it's a, um.
A co-op?
Co-op, yeah, we have to buy our electricity from them. And once we get it, then we give it to you, the consumers, well.
Do, do you know where that electricity comes from in Basin, Basin co-op, where do they get their electricity?
They get their electricity, it's not from the, um, from the water, it's not, they have to buy it too. They compete for it and we're locked in, we had to be locked in for ten years.
Okay.
And that's why we keep our price the way it is. But whenever Basin has a, has a rate increase, who they buy theirs from, then we have to increase ours. We just increased it a year ago, I think it was, and we're looking at September or October increases it, but not by a lot, just like we did last time. So it's, it's, um, it's convenient for the people that use electricity not to have a big bill, because they all complain, everybody has to have electricity. I don't know what we're going to do if, if Trump and Musk decide to do something about our electricity. I guess we have to go to, um, kerosene lamps, I don't know, but.
There are ways, I guess.
Um, anyway, our, our agenda, um, we have, we go through our bank accounts, the cash balances, and we also get a check register of the January checks that were written and the date and who they were to and how much. And we can question those if we want to, it, on the amounts, if we see that it, it sticks out. And then the next item is we hear members from, um, tribal members, other co-ops, whoever wants to come to the board can call and get on the agenda and that's, um, here are the board members, item number five. Then we go through the, um, the reports of the chairman and the vice chairperson. The committee members travel, then they give a report on where they went, did and what was accomplished. And, um, the, uh, then we get a report from Jim Collins is on the Basin, Basin Board. And he gives us a summary of what happened. And if the power's still the same or that new board member, that's what is on our agenda. Then our manager gives a summary of what has happened in that month since the last meeting. Um, and usually he has a safety, safety meeting every quarter. All the employees that attend the safety meeting and if there's no accidents, the, um, those employees that attend the meeting regularly get an incentive at the end of the year. And then we have a, we had a report this last time on a scholarship committee that we give out scholarships. This year we got to give out, um, fourteen scholar, we were given, we had fourteen applications and two, plus two linemen applications. We also funded a lineman at two thousand five hundred. And it costs more than that to go to lineman school, but that's how much that we fund them to go. Well, this year we funded, um, six people at a thousand dollars to go to college, um, trade school. And we funded three through the, um, um, when you pay your bill, you want to round it off. It's called education roundup. While that we've got, we, um, have so many people that signed up to round it off. We are sending three, uh, two thousand to three additional college students. So that was good, we never had that before. Then we also attend the, um, national, uh, regional electric co-op meetings, which are in, um, Atlanta, Georgia. Our regular meetings are MECA, annual meetings are usually in Great Falls. And some go to Washington and I don't think anybody's going to Georgia this year because it costs too much. The expenses of the rooms and everything, uh, we're not going to send anybody. And then we have other business, which we talked about, the taxes of, um, the county taxes that the Landmark Board had, um, put on a sixteen percent, uh, increase. And that cost Trico the first, we, we paid it in protest because we've never had to pay that tax before. And when, if we have to increase that, then our customers have to, we have to cha- charge that to our customers also. So that was around sixteen thousand was our bill that we had to pay in protest. Well, it's before the court right now. And then we're waiting for the judge to sign the order so that we can take it to the county and get our funding back. But you had to have signed it in protest, just paid it, you, and didn't protest it or sign anything, then you don't, you, you don't fall under that, um, category of getting your money back. Um, let's see, what else is there? Uh, we don't have Trico Joe, he, he passed away, but he used to come to Langdir and pick up bills on the day before they're due. You have courtesy cash box down here at the, um, uh, people's, um, Christian, we Mullins's house, and you can drop off your payments there. Or you can put them in mail if you want to, but, um, most of the people do that. And they have somebody come over on the tenth, when the bills are due, to pick up the bills on the tenth. And the final day is the fifteenth. And that's about all, if you have any questions.
Was that a one-time, um, increase for the consumers when you paid off the sixteen thousand?
That, no, that wasn't, we didn't increase anything, we paid that on purpose.
Oh, okay.
Our, our bill is usually like sixteen hundred for that. And so we didn't increase that, that was a year ago when we increased the rates. But we're not, we're not planning on increasing them unless Basin increases their rates to us. And that would be September or October of twenty twenty-five.
I think she's talking about the school board, let me hear. They put this on, uh, all feet ground within this area and affected quite a bit, it's been a big area. And I don't think it's like a hundred percent increase. So I don't think they're quite getting the information that they should have got. I guess the school board didn't get, get the information that they should have gotten over it. And they voted on it, but they didn't, we shouldn't have that, you know? And I don't know, it's within the, within the county down there, but I think that it's already paid out now, everything's been paid.
Yep.
So now it's just kind of a waiting game to see what, what happens or who, if we get paid back or, or how it's going to play out. So that affects the sixteen thousand she's talking about. And that came from the, uh, Landmark School Board.
For those people that own property?
Yeah, just for people that own property, uh, truck property, or fee property, excuse me, fee property. Uh, and it just didn't affect, I think there's like eighty-five landowners that it affected. Which is why I know about one of them up there, up there, and then the creature need by, it tripled mine. So, so anyway, it did protest right now and I think it's going to get figured out, so.
All right, thank you, thank you for the update.
Thanks.
Item number five, ITC, Great Plains, Jerry Robinson. Yeah, you have a list, do you mind if I do?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. Can you remote it from there, you can?
I think I can.
Okay.
People, I'd like to thank the council for allowing me this time to meet with you and to, um, have this discussion with you. What I'd like to do today is, um, cover basically four, four things. Uh, one is to give the council an update on the progress of a referendum that, um, that was. Pardon, it's not a referendum. An item that was passed by the previous council to, um, support the, the efforts to have path followed by the Northern Cheyenne from Oklahoma, uh, up to, um, the establishment of the reservation here, have that recognized as a national historic trail. Um, and the other two or three items are requests for tribal support, letters of appreciation for a couple, uh, entities that have been very helpful, uh, in the work that's being done in that effort. And then the third letter is, um, a letter of recognition, official, uh, Northern Cheyenne recognition of one of the sites that has been discovered along that trail. Uh, its name is Turkey Springs. And I will, um, I'll fill you in on some of the details here, just to give you some understanding of what it is that you're supporting, uh, with these letters and the progress that we're making on this, uh, tribal resolution that was passed in twenty twenty-two. So just, um, to go back in history just a little bit, and it's a little bit of a, a fun fact, that back in the early sixties, there was an effort, right after the movie, the Cheyenne Autumn came out, to have that trail recognized as what they called the Cheyenne Autumn Trail. Uh, in this picture here, you see Jimmy Stewart, who were in the movie, uh, president at that time, John Wooden Lakes, and for some reason the governor of Wyoming. The trail does not run through Wyoming, but all of the events that took place around the movie, um, premiere took place in Cheyenne, Wyoming. So, uh, the effort, there's been an effort to have this trail recognized that far back. Um, since then, um, there's been a, uh, Northern Cheyenne effort that was started in two thousand and twelve uh, by a, uh, friend of mine, Stephen Brady. Unfortunately, Stephen, uh, traveled on in twenty fourteen and that effort, um, was. I, uh, in the research for my writing, um, decided to, uh, pick that effort back up and in twenty twenty-two went before the tribal council. And this is a copy of that resolution that was passed to, um, have the, the trail recognized as a national historic trail. It's been supported by the National Park Service as being one of the top two trails, uh, eligible to be recognized as a national historic trail west of the Mississippi. Other one was the Bozeman Trail. That one, a big effort, was started to have that recognized as a national historic trail. But there were landowner problems and the last I'd heard is that effort has pretty much ended. We've had some pretty good success with landowners and, um, I think we've got a pretty good chance of, of moving this thing forward. Trail, as you know, came up out of Oklahoma, through Kansas, into Nebraska where they split. Uh, Morning Star and his band were captured and taken to Fort Robinson, that's that purple line, uh, on the trail. And Little Wolf, the following spring, was able to continue on up to, uh, the Yellowstone River and surrender at Fort Keel, which is now of course Miles City.
Masking.
So there were a lot of events, conflicts that took place along this trail. Um, and in order to have this recognized as a national historic trail, we need to be able to identify these sites, what happened there, tell the history that took place on this trail and to find the, the actual path that, that was taken, um, up, up through all of these states, clear across the country. The, there are three sites currently that have been, excuse me, recognized. They have monuments in place and they have regular, um, commemorations that take place, uh, some annually. Um, the gold star you see in the bottom of that green circle is Punished One's Fork. They have a, a, uh, an event every five years there. Um, so those three areas have been pretty well identified and, and that's great, that's very helpful, uh, to the effort. The problem is that a lot of the activity that took place southern into the trail has been up till now lost to history. Nobody, um, knows where, knew where a lot of these sites were, right there along the border of Oklahoma and Kansas. Um, a lot of the, the old time local, uh, people knew, but they've all passed on. And what we've been coming across is the landowners who have these sites on their property don't know anything about them or just maybe just a little slip of information about it. And so we've been doing the research, uh, all the military reports, different government documents, um, homestead records, tribal, um, oral history, and we've been doing our best. best to try to locate these sites. Some of them, this, this, this trail took place nearly a hundred and fifty years ago. So those sites on the bottom of the trail have been lost for almost a hundred and fifty years. One in particular, that gold star that just blew up there is the site of the Turkey Springs Battlefield. It's the first military altercation between the Northern Cheyenne on their journey home. It took place just south of the Kansas Oklahoma border. People have written about this. Monet, Jerome Green, Stan Hoig, Grinnell, all kinds of people have written about it. Nobody has been able to find it. And, um, through our research, with all of those records, um, we've been able to get a positive identification of the site of Turkey Springs Battlefield. It starts with this map, which is a line drawing of what occurred, what led up to and what occurred at the Battle of Turkey Springs. This map came from the court martial of one of the officers, Captain Sebastian Gunther. And it, it gives us a lot of geographic features that identify the site. Now, when you get down in that country, it's really rough and there's a lot of sites with these gullies, draws, ravines, just and, and all, all these little knolls and points. And so it's easy to get mixed up and people have been looking for this for a long time. There is a site, when I first went down there and I asked to go see Turkey Springs, they took me to an actual springs and said, this is Turkey Springs. Turns out it was over six miles from where we've actually located the battlefield. The problem is the soldiers had a bad map. They didn't know where they were. They were hit, got fired on. They really didn't know where they were. They just guessed it was at Turkey Springs. And so everybody from that point forward has said, uh, this is, this took place at that spot six miles west of its actual location. We've taken this map. Now, like I say, there are a lot of identifying features on this map here. Two that helped us tremendously are these two lines. The yellow one represents what the captain called the line of battle and the blue one represents the approach of the soldiers and also their escape route after the Cheyenne pinned them down. You look, you, you can see right there at the point, there's a little circle right to the right of it. That depicts a knoll, a prominent knoll that is described in all of the, um, military records. That's where the captains, um, backed up and they had kind of a command center there. And then just right at the very tip of where the blue and yellow lines come together, you can see a sketch there that represents a ravine where soldiers kept their horses. And so again, people have, have tried to use this map to find this site. They didn't have access at the time that they were looking to things like Google Earth. And plus we had access, I, I was able to connect with a retired, um, professor from University of Oklahoma Northwest who has been working for this place. She is a local girl and she knows all the landowners had access to, to go out here and, and do all the searching that we needed to do. So if you take this map and you put it, this is a topo map of area that we finally, after six years or so of working together, we finally came to determine is the actual site of Turkey Springs Battlefield. If you remember that, that circle, that knoll that I pointed out on the, on the line drawn map, you can see it there. It's that red dot with the black dots going around it. We call that Rendelbrock's Knoll. It was cap, uh, a captain named Joseph Rendelbrock, who was in command of the soldiers. And they backed up and they, they, um, hunkered down on that knoll for two, two days. I'll show you a picture of it here in just a bit. You see that yellow line on the topo map, all the red dots there. We did an optical survey there. We went out with metal detectors. We pulled artifacts off of this site that confirmed for us that this is the site of Turkey Springs Battlefield. The reason I'm going into this much detail is I'm asking this body to sign a letter of recognition that this is Turkey Springs Battlefield, that the Northern Cheyenne Tribe recognizes this as a Turkey Springs Battlefield and recognizes the significance that it has to Northern Cheyenne history. Yes?
Has TPO been involved in this at all?
Pardon me?
TPO, Tiana?
Yes, yes. I've, I've spoken with both Tiana about this. Actually, we had, actually members of the Cheyenne Cultural Commission come out last year and visit the site. I've been in touch with Southern Cheyenne TPO as well and they're aware of it. So, um, so some of the, uh, events that took place at the site, one of the letters that I'm asking, letters of appreciation is to Algonquin Consultants. They are the archaeological, um, firm that has been working with us. The gal on the left in the yellow vest, her name is Rebecca Hawkins. She is Shawnee and she has adopted, this is one of those, one of those, I call a real spiritual moment for us. She adopted two Cheyenne, um, children and she can trace their heritage back to members of the Northern Cheyenne Tribe. She is providing her services and the services of a half a dozen of her employees pro bono. No charge to us.
What was, what was the name of that?
Not only on this site, but other sites as well that I'll, I'll come up real quickly. The gal in the center in the blue cat leaning down is Christina Wykoff. She is the Director of the State of Oklahoma State Historical Preservation Office. She's on board with, um, this site, American, this is a national, uh, a national historic site. I'll, I'll show you a form here in just a bit that she sent to us to help us with this process. So they're, they're, they're up on Rendelbrock's Knoll, right in that picture and they're, they just located forty-five seventy shell casing and they're excavating it. This is Rendelbrock's Knoll from the base looking up, um, standing right at the edge of what's called the horse ravine, looking up at the knoll. You can see it, it's a commanding view, everything around it. It's one of the highest points out there. This is the horse ravine. This is where they kept the horses. All of the dead trees in there that weren't there at the time. The cedar is, um, kind of like Russian olives in this country. It's, they're just, it's invasive and it's, uh, clogging up all of the waterways. So, so this is where they kept the horses. We were able to pull nearly thirty artifacts off of that line of battle that I, I showed you that yellow line. And then in addition, on Rendelbrock's Knoll, we were able to pull several forty-five seventy cartridges. This one in particular, uh, cements it for us that this was the actual battle site of, um, Turkey Springs. You can see the numbers and letters on there and it provides a lot of really important information. The C at the top says that it's a carbine, it's a rifle, forty-five seventy rifle, which is what the military used. The F at the bottom indicates that it was manufactured at the Frankfurt Armory in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. The three on the left, and you can barely see it, but the seven eight on the right indicates that this was manufactured in March of eighteen seventy-eight, six months before this battle took place and it was shipped to Fort Reno. There was no, there, there were no military exercises of any kind in this area in those six months. And this was the last conflict between U S troops, Native Americans in the state of Oklahoma. So there was nothing after this. The only way this cartridge could have been located on that knoll was because of the Turkey Springs Battle. So we are a hundred percent certain, everything jives, all of the reports, all of the maps, all of the artifacts, site of the Turkey Springs Battle Site. After a hundred and fifty years, we've, we found it. We are filing a lot of papers. This is an Oklahoma Archaeological Site Survey Form that was performed, filled out by consultants. The National Register of Historic Places Registration Form was mailed to me by Christina Wykoff, the State Historic Preservation Officer. We are in the process of applying to have it recognized as a national historic. A letter from this body would help that effort. So that's one of the documents that, um, um, this body will agree to sign so that we could forward that to the proper people. So going back to the map. In addition to all these altercations, a lot of Northern Cheyenne died on this journey north. The Xs represent, um, sites that I have pulled out of the historic record. Some of the names I know, some I don't. One in particular that I want to mention to this body today is the X that just popped up there at the bottom, just right north of the Turkey Springs Battlefield. This was the first person killed, first Northern Cheyenne person killed on the journey north. His name was Black Beaver. We've got that from, uh, uh, records from Grinnell and from Mari Sandoz, who did a lot of research. Sandoz's work, she was out here on the reservation forties doing research for her book. She, uh, she's been a friend of this tribe from that point until she, she died. She did a lot of genealogy work that I'll talk about here in just a bit. This man's name was Black Beaver and his story is recorded, uh, in the local, local papers at that time. And, um, Grinnell, Little Wolf, um, told the story to Grinnell. He recorded it and, um, we have other people involved in this as well. The man you see in this picture is scary quiet. He's the landowner. He's also a Kansas State legislator. I came across him, it's a long story I won't get into, but I came across him and he told me, he bought the land about twenty-five years ago. And when he bought it, the old boy that he bought it from told him that when he was young, very young, and his father bought the land, originally bought the land, he said an old cowboy came up and told us that there was this Indian grave over here by where these trees are next to the tree. Said the trees weren't there at that time. He's, and he, he told, um, the old cowboy said, I was one of those that buried him. So we're three people away from, um, the person, or two people really, away from the person who buried, helped bury Black Beaver at this site. We, um, it was just very, very important to me to pursue this. I was following the trail of my ancestors. I didn't think I'd actually come across one. And so it was just really important that, that we continued the search. So it was very fortunate. I was put in touch with a company called I T C Great Plains. And, um, they are another company that I'm asking this body to, uh, write a letter of appreciation to. I've actually written the letter. I'm just asking this body to sign that, read and sign that letter. I T C Great Plains has provided us over twenty thousand dollars in the last two years to do this research, this field research that's producing these results for us, that's giving us our history. And this is, this is some of the work that we've done. After Gary pointed this place out to me, I got ahold of, of, um, a, a company that does ground penetrating radar. They went out and did a survey of the site. This is one of the panels that they sent back to me. And you can see four orange arrows pointing to different spots on that site there. And they said, we can't tell you there's a grave there, but we can tell you that there are disturbances or anomalies in the soil significant enough to suggest that there is a disturbance there, the size, approximately the size of a human grave. That's all they could say. So we needed to go a little bit further, look a little bit deeper and, um, Rebecca Hawkins with Algonquin Consultants. We were going to go in with, with more sensitive equipment, but Rebecca Hawkins with Algonquin Consultants said, I can do you one better and I, I know a person that has search dogs. And so I contacted them, they're K Y canines. And they came out and the dog you see laying down there is a little Jack Russell terrier. Her name is Pocket. She was recognized in two thousand and twenty-three by the American Kennel Club as the top search dog in the nation. She's located grave sites in the Mississippi River Valley that were almost a thousand years old. She's having a conversation with her handler and owner Jennifer there in blue. And what she's telling Jennifer is he's right here. I'm laying on top of this grave. Jennifer also brought out another dog named Wick, who is only two years old. Pocket is ten years old. Wick is two years old. Wick at this time was in a kennel in the back of a truck. He knew nothing about what was taking place out here. They took Wick out and keyed on the exact same site. And Jennifer turned to me at that point, she says, I have goosebumps. She said, we're standing here in thousands of acres of open prairie and both dogs have keyed on the exact same site. She said, I can tell you with absolute certainty, there's a human body under that dog. So again, with all of the research, all of the government documentation, local legend, the oral history, and now really scientific and canine confirmation, um, we're certain that this is the grave site of our ancestor, Black Beaver. Last year, we went out there with the Cheyenne Cultural Commission. We, um, performed a traveling ceremony. We, um, encouraged Black Beaver to continue his journey. We marked his grave. See up in the branch of the tree, there's a small perp law. It's very important that we go through this process to, to recognize brave man. I was the Northern Cheyenne when we first found the grave site and I walked up to the site and normally I would say something like grandfather, but for some reason I said uncle. I said, uncle, we found you. We've come back for you. Said, I'm going to bring, I'm going to come back and I'm going to bring people and we're going to help you finish your journey. And that's what we did. After that, well, actually just that, just, just prior to the ceremony, I was doing some research in the Oklahoma Historical Society and I came across some of that research that Mari Sandoz did, that I told you about, that genealogical work. And discovered that Black Beaver was nineteen years old when he died. He had a daughter. Her name was Elk Woman. She continued the journey and she married a man named Wolf Voice. And, uh, this is And this is a picture of Wolf Voice and Elk Woman, who was known as Clara Wolf Voice. These are the grandparents of Grover Wolf Voice, who many of you know. Grover Wolf Voice was the grandfather of Lee Longbear. Which means that Black Beaver was Melissa's great, great grandfather. This is the connection that this trail has to all of us today. Just an example of it. This is important Cheyenne history. It's being supported by some incredible people out there who are giving a lot to us to help us to find our history. One of, one of the other sites that ITC Great Plains is helping us with is to locate this site, which is called the Wall Site, the, the Wall Fight Battle Site. And it's up on a, up on the top of a bluff up there. You can see, you can see a little knoll up on top there. We're starting in on this. We made an initial visit just this last fall out there to do some ground proofing, some metal detecting. Again, Algonquin Consultants sent their crew out and we've, were able to pull some artifacts, a lot of artifacts actually, from the soil. That's 4570 shell casing, that's a slug. Here's an interesting point. The woman kneeling down in the picture on the right is the landowner. She's so excited about our being there, she wanted to participate. And she's welcoming us back with open arms. She says, I want more of this done. She pulled that slug out of the ground herself. That's Cody Webster walking on the edge of a cliff. I was telling him, get back. You can see me kind of leaning and taking the picture. It's my shadow on the bottom. I didn't want to get too close. That's about a 80-foot cliff right there that he's on the edge of. They're really doing good work for us. We're gonna have another trip out there this, this year, this fall. We've done more research. Anytime I go out on a site and see it for the first time, things start to come for me and I start to understand things more fully. And a second or third or fourth trip is always required to, to do more in-depth research. That's what we're gonna do. Then down there, this is just propaganda. This is, oh, the man on the, on the right in that picture, his name is, is Kim Goodnight. The man on the left is, is again Gary White, the man who was pointing at the trees. Man on the right is Kim Goodnight. He's a descendant of Colonel Charlie Goodnight, who, who founded the Goodnight Cattle Trail that came up through Kansas there. He has been my contact. He works for ITC. He put us in touch with ITC and their funding. He's been a great friend. He's just excited to continue moving forward with this. This is ITC. They said, we love this. This is what we're about. Connecting with the community has roots in our, in, in the areas that we work in. So in fact, all up and down this trail, I've made contacts. And I mentioned the, the problems that the Bozeman Trail had with landowners. I can tell you that people all up and down this trail love this history and they want to help out. So we're, we're doing our best to, to continue moving forward with this. Been to a lot of the different sites, all up and down the trail. We're making great progress with it, grassroots level. And we're working up into eventually getting more involved with the legislative process of it all. It's important work. This is the last slide I'll show you here. This is, this is the site where a Cheyenne boy was killed after the Oberlin raids. And as you can see there, it just says Indian Boy Monument. I don't have his name. It's something that I'm working real hard to find. I know the story, what happened. Whoever put that monument up, that, that disc up as a monument, got the date. And that may be the date that they put the disc up to identify it. But it was over on that bluff in the background where he was killed. He was left behind. He broke his hip. That's right on the corner, the edge of what's called a hundred head draw. Northern Cheyenne drove a hundred head of cattle up in there and killed them so that they could continue, have food to continue moving north. He fell from a horse, broke his hip. He couldn't continue. So he stayed there for two weeks until a couple cowboys found him and killed him. And this is the monument that's up to him. We want to do better than that. In fact, this is just a mock-up of a plate that I envisioned having as part of the markers along this trail to recognize and celebrate the courage and, and dedication and tenacity of our ancestors to go home. But with that, there are three documents that I've presented to this body. One is a letter of recognition of the Turkey Springs Battlefield. It's already identified as the official site of Turkey Springs. And the two letters of appreciation, one to ITC Great Plains and one to Algonquin Consultants for their, and I know that they will appreciate that and they want us to be able to help us continue in our efforts. Just to let you know, I will come before this body a little later on as we get closer to the 150th anniversary, which is 2028, the sesquicentennial event. We hope to have a trail long event, much like they did with the Lewis and Clark Bicentennial thing, to, to have a trail long trip, starting down at Fort Reno in Oklahoma. We think we've located the last campsite of the Northern Cheyenne, where they left their lodges standing and fires burning fooled the military. We think we've located that. We want to do some research there. But in, in 2028, we want to put together a trip, and I've been talking with Wallace Bearcham about this, about having this journey all the way up through all of these sites, sharing this history with anyone who, who wants to come along. Northern Cheyenne, there's gonna be a lot of local involvement as well. There is one person in particular that I will ask this body for another letter of appreciation, and that is for Dr. Kay Decker, who played a significant role in helping us to find Turkey Springs Battlefield. Melissa?
There's no letters in packets. We need a motion to approve letters or?
It looks, it looks like they're resolutions.
Yeah, they're resolutions.
I'll make that motion to approve all of them.
I think we need to separate them.
Okay.
You got Allen Long, when you got ITCB Great Plains?
You have Algonquin Consultants. ITC Great, Great Plains, Kay Decker, is that what the, is that the name?
Dr. Kay Decker is a separate one.
Right, right. Dr. Kay Decker is a.
I'll make, I'll second.
State of Oklahoma Office.
I don't have any requests for them yet. The three documents are the letter of appreciation for Algonquin Consultants, a letter of appreciation for ITC Great Plains, and then an official statement of the tribal council recognizing the official site of Turkey Springs Battlefield. Those should be the three documents. I'm asking this body to approve whatever process that takes.
I'll, I'll make, I'll make the first motion for a letter of approval for Algonquin Consultants.
A second.
Are, are you approving this resolution or are you approving the, what are you approving?
Well, the resolution is asking for.
For the letter?
For the letter.
Just the letter. I'm just asking if the tribal council would be willing to sign the letter. Do you need it in resolution?
But do you have the letter?
Do you need it in resolution form?
No.
No, just not, not the two letters? No.
But do you have the letters?
They should be, I sent them in.
I just have the resolutions.
Basically in the resolution format.
Oh yeah, there you go, right here.
That's an over here writer. This question.
Good day. Come back home and fill these people in on our history. Let the council know. Before you start anything and pass on all this thing, you need to have our Tippel, the Cheyenne Tribal Historic Preservation, look into this.
Yeah, he's already working, he's already been working with.
With the Cultural Commission and the Tribal Historic Preservation Office.
I used to be the Tribal Historic Preservation Officer, as an undertaken. And some springs of what you're talking about, this is one part of it. I am currently sitting on a board, dealing with Sand Creek, getting a, to language change, to recognize Sand Creek. Those things have to be dealt with before you do anything to pass. Make sure your ducks are in line, because this is our undertaking. And I did a lot of research. I rode up a ton of railroad and all that there, what is involved in all that. And my writings killed it. They were gonna build a railroad right through our homelands. And the Sutis family, the Sutis family did in-depth research on the trail from Fort Reno. And my grandfather was there, strong left hand, is the last known warrior to take out a high military officer, punished in the women creek, took two shots. And there's a lot of history in this here, what you're, what you're doing, that's just part of it. There was the stories, you know, told along this trail. The 18th century was after the Cheyenne. And we've come to know these stories and I listened and I, I know them.
This resolution.
Three uncles and a father, a brother and a son of all of them fought.
She should.
They did the research.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you get going on this and do your research on it, and get our advice and get our history in. We was in 19, in 2000, I made a trip to Denver Human Museum. They had 97 human remains down there that belonged to the Cheyenne people.
Thank you.
And the youths tried to claim it. And I said, no, I want to view those remains. I saw the vast skulls of the babies, the young people, the slashed saber marks on the adults. And yet they took and buried them on the other side of the mountain on youth land. And I had archaeologists did their research on it and it was conclusive that those were Cheyenne remains, 97 Cheyenne remains. And today, it still bothers me that they placed them over the mountain on youth land. And I still hear the cries, just like Jesus brother Steve, he worked hard on it. He heard the cries. They worked hard, did it. My brother was the last known representative of the Cheyenne. And we gotta do this research real good and thorough before we move. And that's my advice to this council. You all young people, I watched so many grow up. All young people, I watched all you guys grow up. And you guys are sitting in these chairs as our leaders. It's just a word of advice, because you know, I, I know a lot of stories, I know my history. And we need to get back and speak our language. Not many of you, maybe a few of you don't understand the language, and all of us does. You need to be Cheyenne speaking so you can understand everything. That, that, that a bit about. I thank you for your research. Good to see you.
Sorry.
I don't think it's, so.
Sorry.
Sign that, all this, what they're gonna sign? I think signs are very expensive.
Great question. First to, to address the research issue. I've been involved in doing the research on this for, for 20 years solid. I've, I've been to all of these sites. I've been to all of the historical societies, Oklahoma, Kansas, Nebraska, Wyoming, Montana. I've, I'm involved with the Northern Cheyenne Healing Trail and the Journey Home Committee has belonged with a couple members of the council here. We've been doing research, extensive research at all of these places. I just got back from two weeks in Los Angeles where I went through George Burke Grinnell's complete records. I've spoken with elders, I work for the Cheyenne Cultural Commission and Tippel extensively over the last several years. I've given them this work and several others as I've gone through this process. I, I absolutely hear you. This is something that you just don't do by yourself on a lark. This is something that involves all of our history and that's why I'm here today, is to continue that process of, of showing this work to everyone who needs to see, so that they can take a look at it and say, that works or that doesn't work. If there's something that I've got wrong, I, I love being corrected because I want to get it right. That's, it's, it's so important to me. I, I put my life into this. This, this gave me life and, and I've got to, I've got to give back and that's what I'm trying to do. So I appreciate everything that you said. As far as the funding for who's gonna maintain sites like this, the, once, this process is just recognizing it as the site. There is no official center planned or anything like that. There has been some discussion of trying to do something with the Turkey Springs site similar to the Washtata site, but that would be local, that would be something that, and Dr. Kay Decker has floated that idea. She's really good at fundraising. In the course of my work, I've come across really good grad writers. I'm a, I'm a writer, but I'm not a grad writer. That takes a special breed. And they are, they feel that when that time comes, we'll, we'll take a look at that. We don't know exactly what that will involve. We do envision some sort of a monument or something that just recognizes the site. The good thing about this is, is that there is not a lot of high maintenance there. It's, it's land. We're hoping to get in there and do the research and pull the artifacts that confirm these sites before what they, what they call pot searchers do. Those people that come and just look for artifacts and put them in their pocket and walk off. All this information is being documented. It's like, it was very important that we found those shell casings in that line of battle, because that confirms for us that's where much of the battle took place. We're gonna go back to Turkey Springs and to the Wall Fight with light on. Looks down at the ground and identifies, um, surface disturbances. So we can hopefully identify where rifle pits were dug. I've been down to Montrose Fork, and those rifle pits are right up on the ground. Those are stones that are placed around. They're still there today. These ones, um, have deteriorated over time.
President.
The only reason I ask that question is because when they found a military rifle on the north end of our, uh, town here, they had to approach me because my children had standing on the site and the state was kind of park, state park on the side of our town. And then somebody mentioned free property. Who has to pay for that, you know, that used to landowners, whoever the landowner is, are they going to charge us? You know what I'm saying? I'm just wondering.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, and that is something that, uh, we're, we're well aware of. We're very grateful to the landowners for allowing us on there. They're very supportive, and one thing that we try to do is to assure them that this isn't going to be the government coming and taking over their land. And we want to do this from the get-go respectfully. And, and, um, any funding that is necessary, we hope to be able to generate ourselves. It shouldn't be a whole lot. We're not looking to build a big museum or anything there. Just, again, just a, a small plaque or monument. There, there, it talks about putting a plaque up a half a mile from Black Leader's Grave. Nothing that points specifically at it, but just says, "In this area, um, the first brave Northern Cheyenne warrior fell." And telling the history of that. Um, we've got money for that. We've got funding for that. So it'd be something along that. Just to identify, so that people could travel this trail and say, okay, this is where it happened. This is the way out of the land. And then, and, um, gain a better understanding of that history.
We have a motion and a second.
I, I want to say so.
I was actually going to withdraw my motion.
Well, it, it's fine. Thank you. Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Foot for, for, um, recognizing. But I think the resolutions, reading through them, I think this, um, would be good for them to, receive recognition for their work and their, um, efforts here. By resolution, and then maybe an attachment of a letter signed by all of us, I think would be good for these two, for the consultants, and, um, for ITC, for Algonquin Consultants.
Okay, so go forward with them?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would say go forward with them. Um, I just want to thank you, Jerry, and I, he told me the story of my ancestor here, and it's amazing. It makes my heart feel good, and, and our family, um, would like to honor these individuals as well. So we'll schedule something later.
Yes, thank you, Melissa. I, I appreciate that. It was just occurring to me. I forgot to mention this. So, Ursus Bircham holds an annual commemorative event, um, April first to recognize his return to the, to the Yellowstone and, um, our homeland here. I spoke at it last year. I've been talking with him, and he is open to inviting, uh, uh, members from ITC up. I haven't contacted Rebecca Hawkins yet. I don't know if she would be available. But I, I will certainly contact her. ITC will come up on their own dime. They will pay for their own expenses to come up here. And what I would like to do is just present them with this letter. And I, uh, imagined, um, uh, probably even in something they could put on like their, their corporate shelf, just recognition from the tribe, and then, uh, a blanket or something wrapped in, you know, just, just that type of recognition to, to let them know that we do appreciate. And if Rebecca, uh, was, uh, for Algonquin, um, we would do the same for her. If not, we will probably be having an event down in Oklahoma at some point, where I would like to present her at that time. But if, if she's able to make it up here, um, I think next month would be a great time to do that as well.
Okay, that means.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Hold on.
Okay.
So, um, I'm, I'm still adamant about withdrawing my motion, and the reason for that is because Councilwoman Foot, uh, gave me, uh, you know, let me know that, you know, uh, what I want to do here by, by, by withdrawing my motion is I want to give Councilwoman Lone Bear an opportunity to make this motion because it is so significant to her family. So I would still like to withdraw my motion to give Councilwoman Lone Bear an opportunity to make this motion on behalf of her family for this.
Thank you, Tori.
Yes.
Um, so I'll do it, I'll do, um, separately. Uh, the first one will be, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for recognition of Algonquin Consultants.
Tori.
Do we, yeah, do we have to vote on my withdrawal of my motion?
No.
Okay, so it's just, okay, cool.
Motion by Melissa Fisher to.
No.
Melissa.
Melissa Lombard.
But I totally missed the. What was your motion, Melissa?
To approve the resolution for recognition of Algonquin Consultants.
Motion by Melissa Lombard to approve the recognition of Al, Algonquin Consultants that are given to public service in regards to indigenous. Second by Teresa Small. Melissa Lombard? Yes. Howard Antivales?
Yes.
Stefan Rainenberg?
Yes.
Eva Foot?
Yeah.
Eva Fries?
Yes.
Ernest Littlemouth?
Yes.
Tori Davy?
Yes.
Donovan Lindbergh?
Yes.
Teresa Small?
Yes.
Gwen Spotted Horse? Melissa Fisher?
Yes.
Eleven. And then the second one, make a motion to approve the resolution for recognition of ITC Great Plains. Motion by Melissa Lombard to approve a resolution recognizing ITC Great Plains. I'm sorry.
Okay.
That's the right one, right?
Yeah.
Okay, commit to building authentic and mutually respectful relationships with. Second by Teresa Small. Melissa Lombard?
Yes.
Howard Antivales?
Yes.
Stefan Rainenberg?
Yes.
Eva Foot? John Fries?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
Donovan Lindbergh?
Yes.
Teresa Small? Gwen Spotted Horse?
Yes.
Melissa Fisher?
Yes.
Seven, yes, motion carried. Okay, and then the third one, um, I think we probably need a resolution supporting the, I don't know if it would be NHL designation? Is that what, what it will be?
Yeah.
For the site?
Yeah, I, I did send something in resolution form, I believe, for the recognition of Turkey Springs Battlefield as the official site.
Well, that resolution has, has it, didn't it, this?
This is for, this resource study.
This is the recognition.
This is the trail, um.
That's there, there, all of us.
And you sent the previous approved resolution.
So I, I do have one, and I, I, I believe I sent it. But if not, I can absolutely, um, I've got it on my laptop. I can print it off, but it's.
The ITC Great Plains, it, it also has, um, it just says, "Research culminating this successful discovery of Turkey Spring, Turkey Springs Battlefield."
Yes, President Small just pointed that out. That is, um, for their help with all of those sites that are listed. They, they've been very involved in all of those sites. This, uh, resolution would be to specifically, uh, have the Northern Cheyenne Tribal Council recognize, the, the site of Turkey Springs Battlefield that I just showed here as the official site. Uh, that's not been done. It's in the process. That's the, uh, application going forward for, um, it to be recognized as a national historic site. And a letter of recognition by the Northern Cheyenne Tribal Council in support of that application. Basically saying, this, we believe this is the site. This is what that resolution would be.
Uh, your motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second it.
To approve it without the, without it being here?
The resolution?
Yeah, he has it on there. He's going to send it to her.
Can we, can we review it?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we just have it printed off and then come back to it.
I can, if, if you give me two seconds, I'll unplug and I can, I can.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to budgets.
Like to, uh, make a motion to go into executive session before we discuss budgets.
A second. Okay, so we got a request for executive session. President Small? Okay. So we'll go into executive session at twelve sixteen. If everybody can step out, please.
Should we finish them out, or are we done with them?
Yeah, he's gonna, he's gonna take care of the other resolution, so.
Okay, alright.
Hold on, this motion?
Oh, he's.
Her seat's right there if you wanted to leave a note.
There's a motion and a second if you want to.
Big sweet tea.
I'm not breaking.
We have the other part of the resolution?
It's over, the resolution is...
Oh, okay.
I have the letter.
Yeah, we have the letter. We need to...
Did everybody get a copy?
I'm on a hand.
Got it, folks.
So, uh, the motion is being made on the last part of, uh, item five.
Okay, I'll amend my motion, Edina, to, um, for support, um, for support, for support and, um... So he just sent a letter.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I'll just, I'll just make a motion to support his letter.
One second.
Letter? Acknowledging Turkey Springs?
Support his letter, um, regarding the recently discovered site of Turkey Springs Battlefield. Motion by Melissa Lombard in support of Jerry Robinson's letter regarding the recently discovered site of Turkey's Battlefield. Second by Tori Davy. Melissa Lombard, yes. Donnie Berrills?
Yes.
Effen Rainybird?
Yep.
Eva Foote?
Uh-huh.
Dejoni Freeze?
Yes.
Ernest Littlemouth?
Yes.
Tori Davy?
Yes.
Lumberhand? Teresa Small?
Yes.
Other horse? Yes. Melissa Fisher?
Yes.
Motion to, uh, have a forensic investigation performed on LATCF, ARPA, and CARES.
One second. Where's the funding coming from for the investigation?
We'll find it, that's always what, that's the... That's where, that's what they always say when people are told things, you know, they say, "Well, I guess I'll have to go find where I can take it from." So, guess that's the answer. Somewhere to get it from needs to be done.
Motion by Tori Davy to have a forensic audit on LATCF CARES Act, second by Teresa Small.
ARPA, CARES, LATCF.
So the, um, Biden's department and the program manager has a chance to present to us, vote is no. Howard, Dr. Berrills?
I'm gonna have to agree with, um, the same as Melissa, so I'm gonna say no.
Effen Rainybird?
Yes.
Eva Foote?
Uh-huh.
Dejoni Freeze?
I think we do need to look at what we have so far and to make more of a plan for an audit first, before moving forward, so I say no for now.
Ernest Littlemouth?
Yes.
Tori Davy?
Yes.
Donovan Lumberhand?
Yes.
Teresa Small?
Yes.
Glenn Spotted Horse?
Hey, Laura.
No.
Melissa Fisher?
No.
Six yes, five no. Motion carried.
Failed.
Carried.
Carried, motion carried. Okay, um, I'll make a motion to approve the resolutions of the Northern Cheyenne Tribal Council authorizing the modifications and our adoption of certain budgets for expenditure of available funds, and these are FY25 budgets, um, as listed, and that is my motion.
Motion by Melissa Fisher to authorize the modification and or adoption of certain budgets for the expenditure of the available funds, funds 847, Ruse, 786. Melissa Lombard?
Yes.
Howard, Dr. Berrills?
Yes.
Eva Foote?
No.
Dejoni Freeze?
Yes.
Ernest Littlemouth?
Yes.
Tori Davy?
No.
Donovan Lumberhand?
Yes.
Teresa Small?
No.
Glenn Spotted Horse? Melissa Fisher?
Yes.
Please.
Yes, three no, motion carried.
Okay, um, I have a resolution of the Northern Cheyenne Tribal Council authorizing the first submission of fiscal year 20... Office of Special Trust Account, PL 732705, for the grazing operations in the amount of 172,566.50. That is my motion.
A second. Motion by Melissa Fisher to authorize the first submission of the fiscal year 25 from the Office of Special Trust Account, PL 7320-70-5 for the grazing operations, second by Melissa Lombard, yes. Howard, Dr. Berrills? Eva Foote?
Uh-huh.
Dejoni Freeze?
Yes.
Ernest Littlemouth?
Yes.
Tori Davy?
Yes.
Donovan Lumberhand?
Yes.
This is the drawdown for the grazing operation.
Yes.
Other horse?
Uh, it's these two. The two resolutions I passed out early.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion carried.
They are...
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution of the Northern Cheyenne Tribal Council authorizing for a first submission of fiscal year 25 from the Office of Special Trust Account, 7324707, uh, for the grazing operations in the amount of 203,413.68 cents. That's my motion.
A second. Motion by Melissa Fisher to authorize the first submission of the fiscal year 25 from the Office of Special Trust Account, PL 7324-70-7 for the grazing operations, second by Melissa Lombard, Melissa Lombard?
Yes.
Donnie Berrills?
Yes.
Rainybird? Eva Foote?
Uh-huh.
Dejoni Freeze? Ernest Littlemouth?
Yes.
Donovan Lumberhand?
Yes.
Teresa Small?
Yes.
Glenn Spotted Horse?
Yes.
Melissa Fisher?
Yes.
Eleven yes, motion carried.
Okay, um, number eight budget, I mean, uh, minutes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from December 2nd, 2024.
A second. Motion by Melissa Fisher to approve minutes from December 2nd, 2024, regular session, second by Melissa Lombard, Melissa Lombard?
Yes.
Donnie Berrills?
Yes.
Rainybird?
Yes.
Please, yes. Ernest Littlemouth?
Yes.
Tori Davy?
Stand.
Donovan Lumberhand?
Yes.
Teresa Small?
Um, which is, uh, the, um, what was that, the land authority director, is it being advertised on the 10th, right?
Uh, yeah, Thursday, I think she's putting it out Thursday.
Yeah, so, yes.
Glenn Spotted Horse?
Yes.
Melissa Fisher?
Yes.
Yes, one abstain, motion carried.
Okay, um, item number nine, uh, Janice had to go back to work for a Zoom call, so I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of the Northern Cheyenne Tribal Council to approve an update of the Northern Cheyenne Tribal Transportation Program, long range, long-range transportation plan, that's my motion.
Second.
Motion by Melissa Fisher to approve an update of the Northern Cheyenne Tribal Transportation Program's long-range transportation plan, second by Tori Davy, Melissa Lombard?
Yes.
Howard, Dr. Berrills?
Yes.
Effen Rainybird?
Yes.
Eva Foote?
Uh-huh.
Dejoni Freeze?
Yes.
Ernest Littlemouth?
Yes.
Tori Davy?
Yes.
Donovan Lumberhand? Other horse? Melissa Fisher?
Yes.
Yes, motion carried.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 10, it's the FTA grant, resolution of the Northern Cheyenne Tribal Council authorizing the Transportation Department to file and administer the transit program fund under the Federal Transit Administration Program on the Northern Cheyenne Indian Reservation, that is my motion.
By Melissa Fisher to authorize the Transportation Department to file and administer the transit program funded under the Federal Transit Administration Program on the Northern Cheyenne Indian Reservation, by Melissa Lombard, Melissa Lombard?
Yes.
Donnie Berrills?
Yes.
Effen Rainybird?
Yes.
Eva Foote?
Uh-huh.
Dejoni Freeze?
Yes.
Tori Davy?
Yes.
Donovan Lumberhand?
Yes.
Teresa Small?
Yes.
Glenn Spotted Horse?
Yes.
Melissa Fisher?
Yes.
Yes, motion carried.
Okay, item number 11, Table Border Health Plan of Operations, Anna Wiza Bear.
You walked here.
She just walked outside, she's standing out there, I think.
Who, um, made the motion to? Channel. Men? Oh, do we vote on this, the...
I think the motion's...
The F since we...
Have a work session with some of the Kena.
Yeah.
It's actually just putting the board, changing the, um...
Line up.
Composition of the board, that's all it's doing.
I, I also...
There's more to it.
I think the financial services be...
They wanna take the whole works?
So I'll make a motion to table this.
A second. Motion by Melissa Fisher to table item number 11, second by Melissa Lombard, Melissa Lombard?
Yes.
Berrills?
Yes.
Effen Rainybird?
Yes.
Foote?
Uh-huh.
Teresa Freeze?
Yes.
Ernest Littlemouth?
Yes.
Tori Davy?
Yes.
Donovan Lumberhand?
Yes.
Teresa Small?
Yes.
Glenn Spotted Horse? Melissa Fisher?
Yes.
Yes, motion carried.
Okay, item number 12, uh, for title 4E Task Force, Doris Littlewood.
Look it out, too, she had her stack of stuff right there.
Um, it's a resolution and I passed out this big packet of stuff. I don't know, do you want me to go call her or do you want me just to present it? For her, your program director.
Is it supposed to be a resolution or an ordinance?
I think it needs to be an ordinance for a, uh... I think it needs to be an ordinance for a, uh, for a task force. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Send the talk.
What, before applying for licenses, or what?
Huh?
Oh, I see, right there on the back.
You want me to, uh?
The portal. She on the backside of it.
Is he in her office right now?
The Montana has a question.
I don't know.
And trouble the council formally approve such a G.
Title Four E.
I think that's something we should act on if, if we can, huh? Flip it over that, uh, backside of the letter, so the tribal licensing standards. Flip it over on the backside. There's a letter there, too.
So it's before the licensing standards?
Did you see him? Just a letter to, you know, on the back.
But then she brought in the resolution.
Oh, the resolution?
Yeah.
Or she had it?
Yeah.
Or you didn't get one of these big packets?
This big packet?
Yeah. Yeah.
I see. Information for those who are applying. Foster people. Others, do you have, uh, members that you want to put in there?
What is this?
Hey, maybe you should table it.
I don't know. I went and knocked on the door down there. Nobody opened the door. And then I had, uh, Yo-Yo call in there to see if she was in there.
It doesn't say task force, it says task order.
Yeah, it's an attachment. They're wanting to implement an attachment into that.
Yeah, and then it says Four E Task Force, so on the agenda request.
On the agenda.
Sounds like they're just wanting.
Yeah, it is task force.
State of Montana has requested Northern Cheyenne to formally approve Section G Tribal Licensing Standards to the master agreement effective between the State of Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services. This actually was recently noticed and want this section included in the original agreement between the two parties. So it looks like they're just adding.
Or did Doris submit the agenda request herself? Or did somebody submit it for her? Of course she did, okay.
Looks like they're adding.
It says task force on the, on the agenda.
I think that's my mistake. Let me go get the agenda request.
She thinks she might have screwed up on the, uh, request.
Uh, let's take care of item number thirteen while we're waiting. President Small?
Oh, okay. That one there, I just, uh, forgot a name on the appeals board. Do you know, uh, resolution, your leader? Just want to add him as an alternate.
Make that motion to.
Second.
Will you put all the names in there, President?
What's that?
Are you going to put all the names in here? Can we go to?
We just amend that last person, or not? Add the number, we could add.
Uh, no, you.
We're supposed to do it separately, rather than.
Just do it again.
Probably have stuff already, they probably have cases right, right now.
So, so they, they would go off of their first resolution?
Sure. Add him to it.
No, well, they would just get the amending resolution and keep it with their file, so if they ever have to call Buster as an alternate, then they would have that resolution with them.
Okay, so we'll just add.
So just keep, just keep your res, the standing resolution for your, for your original board. You don't want to rescind it.
And just keep this one separate to him.
And then just get a copy of this one to your board members, so they know that he's only an alternate.
Can we add that in there on the therefore be resolved, so it clarifies, on the appeals board as an alternate?
Yeah.
Just adds to the previous resolution.
As an alternate.
You guys okay with that change, um, for those to manage?
I have a motion in a second.
I made the motion.
Second.
Stefan, second.
Buster.
Then for Buster Leader.
You guys get the motion on the appeal board?
Yeah.
Oh, there is? Okay.
Who made the motion?
Melissa made the motion, Stefan, second.
And who's second?
Stefan.
And then include that it's an, he's an alternate.
And Dejoni just included some language on there for a therefore be it resolved.
Motion by Melissa Lombard to add newly appointed member to the Northern Cheyenne Tribal Appeal Buster Leader as an alternate, seconded by Stefan Rainie Bird, Melissa Lombard?
Yes.
Howard Ontobaros?
Yes.
Stefan Rainie Bird?
Yes.
Eva Foot?
Uh huh.
Tony Fries?
Yes.
Littlemouth? Tori Davy?
Yes.
Donovan Limberhand?
Yes.
Teresa Small? Spotted Horse? Melissa Fisher?
Yes.
Eleven, yes. Motion carried.
Okay, uh, number twelve, Doris.
Okay. To be on the agenda, to. I was hired for the Four E Program as a. And State of Montana, uh, enters agreements with the council. Foster Care and, um, payments and stuff. Important thing they left out was, uh, Attachment G, which is, uh, the, uh, licensing of the foster care program. And so there's a big packet here. The only section that was left out was that section. They wanted me to bring it to the council to get it approved, so it would be complete children. So that is.
Saying, I guess, what is that? Inclusion, what does that mean?
Oh, okay. Well, what, um, they entered into an agreement with the State of Montana, and it is dated, they had signed it in September. Uh, Serena did.
Okay.
She left that, just that, just that one part out was, was, was missing from that. So that's the only thing is that would get approved today to include it into, uh, has already been approved.
According to your agenda, you have task force order.
What's that?
According to your, um, request, your agenda, it says task force order.
So you're not seeking a task force?
A task.
Well, that, that's what it is. This, um, this thing that, that, that they had passed was Tribal Title Four E Task Force Order, uh, um, attachments. That's what this is.
Well, the whole thing is a task force order?
Yeah, well, the, uh, Serena and, uh, the council had, had already passed this. The only part missing was the G, uh, section Attachment G on that. That was foster care license.
The ordinance, right? Not a resolution?
What's that?
It's an ordinance. It's an ordinance.
I think it. Well, they said resolution, so I put resolution, but.
Okay, but this is, uh, written in a, in an ordinance.
Yeah, well, they, they said you need, uh, get a resolution on that.
So I'll make a motion to approve with corrections. Uh, it's not an ordinance. It'll be a resolution.
A second.
Okay.
Motion by Melissa Fisher to amend and insert Attachment G Tribal Licensing Standards that was omitted when original resolution was passed, with the corrections of changing the ordained to resolution. Seconded by Teresa Small. Ontobaros?
Yes.
Rainie Bird?
Yes.
Tony Fries?
Yes.
Ernest Littlemouth?
Yes.
Tori Davy?
Yes.
Donovan Limberhand?
Yes.
Yes.
Spotted Horse?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Eleven, yes. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doris. Item number fourteen.
Okay, so, uh, Tribal Council, President, Vice President, Secretary, you have, uh, in front of, a resolution. Saying a little bit about what this, what the significance of this resolution, uh, and, and revising our law and order code to reflect what's going on around the country. Uh, so what this is for is for the cannabis. It currently, we have in our law and order code, the public is still, um, still has to forfeit their, their, their belongings, which is completely legal o, outside of the reservation. Um, there's a legal limit, a legal amount, which you can, which you can have on your person of cannabis. Um, well, unfortunately, within our law and order code, uh, it's, you have, you, you have to forfeit your, your belongings, your, what you've purchased off the reservation, and you're also charged a twenty-five dollar fine by the courts. Now, right now, we're, we're in, we're in, uh, we're, we're, we're in discussion, and we're trying to start a, a, a dispensary to create revenue for the tribe to become more self-sustaining. Unfortunately, if we do start a dispensary, um, what will happen is, is we'll have Northern Cheyenne members leaving the reservation to obtain products, cannabis products, and there is a chance of them, when they come back on the reservation, having the products that they paid the tribe for being confiscated from them, and then being charged by our courts for being in possession of them. That is so wrong on so many different levels. So what I have here is a, is a draft, um, code that I, uh, I've been, I've been, uh, showing the council this, and also did a, did a, uh, presentation to the Law and Order Code, um, group that we had, the, the law firm, um, that it has been, that we gave, uh, the responsibility to, to, um, to create this revised law and order code. They all know about it. I did, I, I, I did a, a presentation, took about a half an hour up there in Billings with David and the, and the rest of the, um, the, the, the courts. Um, I've also floated this around the Tribal Council for about, I would say probably about a year now. Um, it is an adopted code from the Northern Arapaho Tribe on the Wind River Reservation. And it basically, in a nutshell, long story short, completely decriminalizes cannabis of the Northern Cheyenne Reservation. So, uh, my resolution that I'm presenting to you guys is a resolution of the Northern Cheyenne Tribal Council to authorize the publication of the revised law and order code for cannabis, or, uh, for the purpose of public comment. So this will be just like what we did with the law and order code revision, the, the complete law and order code revision. I was hoping that this was going to be part of that, but unfortunately, it wasn't. So now what I'm doing is, is I'm putting it out to the public. I'm asking the council to agree with me to put it out to the public for a forty-five day comment period where they can send their comments, just like the, the, the other law and order code review, to the courts, um, and to the council, uh, so that we can get this passed, because if we're trying to do a, uh, if we're trying to start a business, we definitely shouldn't be enticing our tribal members to go utilize our business and spend their money at our business, and then when they come back to the reservation, take what they bought and then charge them for having it. That's so wrong. So, a resolution of the Northern Cheyenne Tribal Council to authorize the publication of the revised law and order code for the purpose of public comment, and I'll skip down to the, uh, to the, uh, or the fourth, whereas where it says the Northern Cheyenne Tribal Court in coordination with the Northern Cheyenne Tribal Council has identified portions of the law and order code regarding cannabis that are in need of modernization and revision to reflect the present values of the tribe and improve law and order on the reservation. And whereas, the Northern Cheyenne Tribal Court has engaged the tribal, the tribe's count, general council and outside council to assist in revising the law and order code. And whereas, the proposed revisions to the law and order code are complete and have been reviewed by the Northern Cheyenne Tribal Court with the input from the Northern Cheyenne Tribal Council, and therefore, be it resolved, the Northern Cheyenne Tribal Council recognizes that the members of the Northern Cheyenne Tribe must have the opportunity to review and comment on the proposed changes to the law and order code before it passes into law. Now, be it finally resolved that the Northern Cheyenne Tribal Council hereby authorizes and directs that the proposed revised law and order code shall be immediately published, and the members of the Northern Cheyenne Tribe shall have a period of forty-five days to comment on the proposed revisions, with such forty-five day period beginning upon the date of approval of this resolution. Passed and adopted by the Northern Cheyenne Tribal. That is my, that is my motion.
So we're starting over with another forty-five days?
I mean, we have to. Got to get that, a week is definitely not long enough for the entire reservation to review this, so I believe.
So the last forty-five days that was passed, I, I took it out. I mailed it out. Um, I put a notice out on my Facebook. I got addresses from people, and I sent the draft copies to whoever requested it and dropped off copies. And we still need a comment. If we're gonna actually request comment, then I think we need to do community meetings. In-person community meetings, because, um, I need to include this, um, cannabis portion in the ones that I mailed out. Did anybody else mail any out?
Oh, was, it was in there? This was in there?
Did anybody else mail any out?
Nobody requested anything.
No, and I, I thought that it was, I thought that we said that it was up to the courts.
I thought the court was gonna do it, but I, I did some, um.
Was there cannabis in there?
Another forty-five.
This was, this was in there, though? This?
Now, yes, I included.
Really? Oh, wow.
But I.
I didn't know that, because I, this, this draft wasn't drafted up.
Well, that was the last time that the motion was made and passed.
I just, I just actually presented the actual code from the.
I think we have to revisit, um, ourselves for any. It's kind of senseless to ask this right now when we have to have.
Take, or, and?
It does need to be revised, and it does need to be finalized, and, um.
But you got no comment whatsoever?
There's three.
Comments submitted to Tribal Court. Um, I didn't.
And that's what, and that's what they were trying to schedule that thing to go over, that law and order code stuff, but it never got approved, so then, mm, they said it would have to be sometime in March was what Curtis said.
Well, lucky you, Melissa.
It's already in there.
Not everyone is on your Facebook, and you block people. Well, not everybody has access to that way of information that you're trying to.
Well, there's more than just personal Facebooks that it was posted on. It was actually posted.
I just, how come they didn't, uh, bring it up? She was here every month, that doctor, because patients need that. My daughter, being a T four, T five paraplegic, she has clones. If she don't have that medical, her doctor rode it out, but their fear of her, they even cried because she has to come live here. They want to leave her out there so she can have legal and everything. Not that her legs move fast. They have to put things on them at the hospital, totally. And then they have to give her barbiturate, narcotics, and, and, and that's, can't drink, because I gotta save. I gotta save it and give it to her, her P P L. So that's why you don't see me at the bar. So I really need these cannabis laws addressed, like everything else that's coming, and it's part of our future. This has been coming for a long time, just like our, uh, what are they use for medicinal purposes? Peotie, peot has been also best... There's other things. With the patient, pick mine here. I talked to another guy, he got out of jail after 18 months, he got caught for, uh, some joints. That's where he came.
I'll second the motion.
For 45 days? Okay?
Yeah.
I don't think we need to have a petition. I think we just need to move on it.
Yeah.
Well, if you guys are willing to go ahead and approve the law and order code revision right now, I'd, I'll, I'll withdraw my motion and make that motion.
Well, if it was already sent out for, you know, review, then I don't, or in its art, it was already with the other...
All right, well, I will withdraw my motion, and I'll make a motion to pass this law and order code revision right now.
That makes more sense.
All right. Okay.
Second, go ahead.
I've been doing, uh, in a car for, oh, four years, uh, in healing. Heard a boot back. And I'm with these high-profile medical people. They prescribe to me, it's medical. He said it's better than taking the pharmaceutical, because the pharmaceutical can...
We got three copies.
...in your bodies.
That one's right there, right?
Time. Where these, uh, natural animals...
Motion on the floor.
Are brutal, beneficial for need to heal. You know, I, I, I'm, I'm that, uh, makes that choice. A lot of cancer patients, a lot of people that I, I see at the facility, they, uh, they're giving that choice, medical or pharmaceutical.
Right, and once you, once you decide to use medicinal marijuana, you are red flagged from being able to get your pain medications and medications pharmaceuticals. Yeah.
We got a motion in a second.
Motion by Tori Davy to pass law and order code revision title...
It doesn't have a title number, so you have to...
Melissa Fisher? Melissa Lombard? Yes. Arles?
Yes.
Stefan Rainier?
Yes.
Eva Fuett?
Uh huh.
Ernest Littlemouth?
Yes.
Tori Davy?
Yes.
Donovan Limberhand?
Yes.
Lisa Small?
Yes.
Gwen Spotted Horse?
Yes.
Melissa Fisher?
Yes.
Monumental thing you just did.
Uh, item number 15.
Item number 15?
Added.
Added it, yeah.
Added it, that's right.
What?
Moratorium.
Moratorium, yep.
So you're gonna...
There's one salary that's covered by that.
There's a few out there. Isn't the demolition crew coming out of there, too?
The Buffalo Director.
That's it? Can we just hang him and put a hold on the rest of it then, or what?
A moratorium on the whole budget is gonna, I mean, when you do a moratorium, it's going to affect the whole budget.
Exclude that one piece or not?
Well, if you're going to put a hold on the budget, you put a hold on the whole budget. It's going to stop everything.
Hold on, let me call my lawyer. Uh, I'll try to keep... But, but we'll go ahead and, and stop spending for now, though, huh?
There hasn't even been any spending, except for the salaries, because...
Just stop, uh, I'll have her start reconciling.
Yeah, because I, when Cheyenne brought that budget to me, um, I gave it to Mariah, and I told her we could work on this when you're done with ARPA.
Yeah.
And it was kind of right towards the end, when it was getting really stressful.
Hold off on a second, I'll just, I'll just, just really freeze it, I think.
So, um, I think if you want to freeze, you know, like the spending and stuff, it, you know, I would just send a memo to Christie, so she know that, like, no other expenditures except for that, expect your salary out of there. And then that way, at least you have a peace of mind, knowing that nothing else is being moved. Okay. So, motion to table? No, nothing?
Action.
Okay, all right. We got a motion on the floor, too, and I'll second.
Motion to adjourn you? Motion to adjourn, spare second by Melissa Fisher. Stefan Rainier? Donovan Limberhand?
Yes.
Gwen Spotted Horse? Melissa Fisher? Evan, yes, motion carried.
Thank you, everyone.
Turn that one.
Okay. Oh, what?
So we're all stripped of the heat.
What's that?
So we're all stripped of the heat. He's, yeah, no dollar when it takes...
Fucking church!
They're calling you before, it's...